All right, we call this meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, we are now to, resident comments, resident, resident. We'll leave that open, no reports, uh, we're, could I get a motion to open the stormwater pollution prevention program?
So moved.
I'll second.
It's a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, all right, we'll leave that open for awhile, where are we gonna go through it?
I'll be expedient.
Expedient?
All right, thank you mayor and council, the city chooses to host a public hearing to address any comments for the, their MS4 permit, which requires a service, excuse me, a stormwater pollution prevention plan. In that, there's a lot of criteria, public education and whatnot, this is the one opportunity that we provide, or one of the opportunities that we provide for residents to provide feedback in a, in a public forum. And so, we'll just move through here quickly. And so, the main, the main item is just where, is just to provide opportunity for awareness. It allows other agencies to comment as well. And this is just a formal requirement in it, of the process and takes a look at what we've done in 2017, what we're doing in 2018 and what we're gonna do into the future. Uh, this is the formal definition of MS4, which all crews passed. And so, it's a, it's a formal permit administered through federal guidelines down to the NPCA. And generally, cities over 10,000 people need it, the city of Carver has been brought into it because they are a community in an urbanized area, even though we don't have 10,000 people. And so, we've had a MS4, we've been authorized as an MS4 since 2006. And we're currently implementing the BMPs. And so, what is this stormwater pollution prevention plan? It's really a way for the city to implement regulatory mechanisms, education programs, complete inspections for any of the existing infrastructure and then also provide documentation, all of which is required of the permit. There's six main, minimum control measures that you have to do, public education and outreach, public participation and involvement, this meeting helps fill criteria in both of those two. Then, then number three goes on to illicit discharge, detection and elimination. Construction site stormwater runoff control, which as we inspect all of the, the development sites that are going on out there or other construction sites, and then post-construction stormwater management. The city takes over these stormwater ponds and piping, just making sure that what they have continues to stay functional. And then providing good housekeeping for all of that. So a brief schedule as to kinda where we fall right now. Right now, we're just kinda reviewing what we've done for 2017, we have to submit the 2017, excuse me, the checklist here at the end of June. And then, going forward, the NPCA is actually updating the requirements for this. You'll see new requirements coming down the pipeline and this schedule kinda follows that. So, reissuance of the permits in 2019, so there'll be more process that we have to go through as a city to help stay within the permitting requirements. And one of the main things that the city does is looking for any illicit discharges, where those contaminants or pollutants come from, they can be as simple as dumpster runoff or blowing leaves and grass clippings into the storm sewer. So the city has to identify these and come up with a program to help improve the situations. That can be through the education, that can be through enforcement, all sorts of ways to do that. And city's got a 20-page document that helps explain that. So, what happened in 2017, the city went through their audits, I believe in April, and they passed. And it was on kinda those first three minimum control measures. So Brian and his staff had done a good job, done a good job providing the education and, and the, the requirements of those. And then plans for 2018, as I mentioned, submitting the annual report by the end of June here, which we're almost already teed up to do, filling out tonight's date as hosting this meeting is one of that. And then, one of the main processes going forward for the city is begin the communication process of clearing trees and brush around city-owned stormwater ponds already, so that in the future, the inspection maintenance becomes that much easier. And then future program needs, as I mentioned, they'll be updating, reissuing the permit in 2019, implementing a pond assessment plan, which will kind of evaluate how much sediment and the level of contaminants in those ponds. And then just improving the efficiencies of inspection, documentation, reporting, 'cause it can be a laborious process, so just trying to stream all that for the city. Any questions or comments?
Are there any questions from the council? Sensing none, are there any questions from the public? Since there are none, we can entertain a motion to close the public hearing, thank you for that, by the way.
I'll make a motion to close, close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Actually, thank you a lot for that, 'cause I know that that's on, it's always fun to go through, but it's definitely needed. So let's, uh...
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by council member Henry and seconded by council member Mock, I was watching, kinda look around. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we have no unfinished business, right back to you there, Mr. Buddy.
Thank you, mayor and council.
Stormwater lift station proj- project.
So on June 5th of this month, we opened bids for the Main Street stormwater lift station project. The low bid from Le Medien Sons came in at $596,587.50. And this unfortunately was significantly higher than what our engineer's estimate was, higher by an order of magnitude of about 140,000. This caught us by surprise, but we, we called some of the contractors and tried to understand the situation. And the biggest thing that we can come up with, or the biggest single thing that we can come up with, was a lot of the contractors bid in nearly $80,000 worth of de-watering for the project because of where the two lift station structures were gonna be. We didn't anticipate nearly that much because we thought they would do the construction when the river level was low, however, the river level's been high all spring, it remains high now. And so, I think a lot of contractors looked at that and said, hey, if we have to meet this completion date, we don't know the condition we're gonna have when we have to build it, so we have to bid it accordingly. And, so that was one of the most significant pieces of it. There were a couple of other items where we only got bids from one electrical contractor versus three that typically bid it, so those were inflated a little bit. So, since we've opened up bids, we've looked at multiple, me and Brian and staff have looked at multiple options on how to move forward with this. We have a couple of ideas that can either adjust the phasing or the scope of the project or package it with other, other projects that are on the horizon for the city. And so, we anticipate that, well, part of it is we just need a little bit more time not to necessarily figure out the details of this, but to figure out some of the details of the other potential projects that it could be packaged with. So we're anticipating that we could potentially rebid this in late summer or fall and allow for fall, winter construction. In light of this, I, I know nobody likes being, especially from an engineer's perspective, being the low bidder when you open bids, it's, to be honest, embarrassing. And so, because of that and just to be good partners and all of this, Bolton and Mink won't charge any fees kinda going forward as we figure out what that next step is. So, trying to, in good faith, just trying to do that, just because we know the situation is not ideal for the city and us. But, the overall recommendation is to, I guess one last piece is the, financially though, the city had bonded for $560,000, so that's not enough to cover the cost of construction. And so, we would ultimately recommend that the city reject all of the bids. That I'll leave it open to any questions.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Buddy?
When were you thinking about rela- letting it?
Probably in a month to two months, depending on when we figure out some details on some other, other projects that are out there.
Any other questions, comments?
I have one comment, this is the first time with Bolton and Mink that we had something that didn't go perfectly. And I commend you and your organization for standing up and having the solution that you're coming up with and having it be a, a team solution rather than just a not solution. So, that's a great first step and it's very much appreciated. Andrew? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was actually gonna make the motion.
Yeah, okay, go, go.
Guess we're on the same page, I'd like to make a motion to reject all bids for the stormwater lift station project. Second.
Motion by council member Mock, seconded by council member Johnson, any further discussion? There's a motion and a second, all in, you go right ahead.
One more question, okay, so you're gonna rebid in a couple of months, what if the water's still high? Should we then wait?
That's another piece that we're gonna look at, is understanding the risk that the contractors, all of them put into there to see if there's, we can reduce that risk. And if the river's still, well, this project could be dug and built in late fall, in the winter. The chances of the river level being very high in
Yeah.
Late fall is pretty, pretty good, so there's
Pretty good that it won't be.
That it won't be, right, so there, that's
We've only had a few fall floods since I've been here.
Right, so once it starts freezing, then, then the risk of the river being very high is low. And so, again, that's part of the evaluation as well, maybe we should just wait for that season to be able to construct it
Yeah.
More efficiently, so.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments, questions? There's a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we are now moving on to number 9.1, stormwater lifts, nope, I apologize, 9.2, JCP Stormwater, just, you know what, just take over the meeting, Andrew.
I'll just take this next one.
Do what you gotta do.
All right, this is for the Jonathan Cover Parkway Stormwater Bypass Project. To give you, to give the council a little bit of background on all of this, the city has really identified a concern with this area at least 10 years ago in part of their surface water management plan and the comprehensive plan. They identified a, the area that drains from north of Dalgrin Road, across Dalgrin Road and towards the south, there's a, there's an area in there where there was a, a pond that did not have a, excuse me, did not have a natural outlet. And so, city has identified that nearly 10 years ago as a potential risk for the city. And so, they've been having conversations and discuss conversations with how to potentially address that. Over the last couple of years or months, with some of the development of the Copper Hills developments and some of the stuff north of Dalgrin Road, it's kinda highlighted some drainage concerns around there. To the point where Dalgrin Township, the WMOs, property owners are all speaking up about issues and how much water ends up running down Dalgrin, Dalgrin Road. The city has worked with the Oak Tree Development to potentially route a significant amount of, amount of water through their site. And I apologize, north is to the left in the figures going forward here, so I will correct that going forward. But if you could bear with me, this is the best I got right now. So, the area on the left side of the figure here is the Copper Hills Development. And they have two stormwater ponds, the pond furthest on the bottom of the screen, currently discharges where the yellow arrows go and outlets that water overland out to Dalgrin Road. The city has worked with, and has created a number of issues that people have identified. The city has worked with the nearby developments, Oak Tree is the one, and has routed generally where the red arrow goes, has routed that water over to the green arrow and is able to send it, send it south through the Oak Tree Development, across Dalgrin Road, and ultimately into a system that the city's been trying to accomplish for several years now. And this is, just to show you some of the impact, this was a picture taken from June 9th of this year when we had the rain event, this is water coming down onto Dalgrin Road, right where the yellow arrowhead is, as a point to Dalgrin Road. So, it's fairly significant, it floods the entire roadway, it's caused significant damage to the roadway downstream, however, that is a township road going that direction. But what the city has, has done and the goal going forward is, we've had a couple of other solutions that we've tried to resolve and, and some of that was trying to acquire rights to use the property around the, the, the isolated pond. But we haven't had success with the property owner. And so, we, the, the next solution is to bypass the water down on either one side of the Public Services Building or City Hall Building, temporary City Hall Building, and route it all the way down Jonathan Cover Parkway and ultimately discharge it to the Cover Creek. The city is looking at a couple of options around the Public Services. There's opportunities with either option A or option B to address some other concerns that the city has, that they'd like to pick up, the roof outlets from on top of the buildings. I know there's significant drainage issues that happens on the east side of Jonathan Cover Parkway in the community park, that was definitely highlighted here over the last couple of weekends. So, both of those options, we're gonna kinda compare and see which one best solves the, best solves some concerns for the city, so we don't know exactly which route we would take at the moment. Looking further downstream at where this would discharge, so this would follow route south along Jonathan Cover Parkway, cross over Jonathan Cover Parkway into a parcel that's owned by Carver County, and hopefully we can get an agreement with them. We already have other city utilities in that property. And then discharge on the south side of County Road 40 into Spring Creek. And so, this project, even though, this project is not increasing any of the rates leaving the site or leaving these developments, the rate control is controlled by the developments upstream in their stormwater ponds, this is helping, helping just convey it kind of around some of the problem areas. And we anticipate that from a concept level, the, the project is estimated to be about $970,000 and that this would be financed through stormwater, excuse me, storm sewer revenue bond. And with that, I will leave it up to any questions that council may have.
We'll open it up, anyone have any questions?
So, the current revenue generated from storm sewer fees will cover the payments for this bond?
Yes, so in part it includes the utility rate study, so there are, there's a 3% increase to the stormwater revenue. You may recall also the, the initial cash for this project would come from a stormwater utility revenue bond that we're in the process of acquiring in, in companionship, that's not a good word, with
In conjunction with?
In conjunction, there you go.
Companionship.
In companionship, what am I, in conjunction with the City Hall capital improvement bond.
Okay, um, well that, okay, so this project and paying, and paying for it, does that leave us any capacity if we have some other kinda storm sewer stuff we've gotta do?
We feel like the million dollars for this, there's some contingency built within that that we can accommodate, you know, maybe current or future stormwater issues, but developing the plans and specifications will give us a better number. And one of the concepts that Andrew was alluding to earlier was the possibility of including this project and the stormwater lift station project within the same bid scope to make it a larger project and make it more appetizing for contractors.
That's a good idea.
So, I, the question that I have is, we're, we're looking at 36-inch reinforced, it's a three-foot pipe. Is that gonna be enough moving forward? We, obviously like the rains that we've had in the last couple of weeks, where, we had talked originally about holding pond, which obviously could hold it, and you can control the in and the out. Is this gonna be able to handle all of that going down into the creek?
Yes, it is.
Is the creek gonna be able to handle it?
That was the other question I had to
Well, I mean, it, it ultimately goes to the creek, right now the significant route is down the middle of Dalgrin Road, Dalgrin Road. And so, it makes it there just a little bit further upstream. This is just kinda bringing the same water that always made it there, just a little bit further downstream.
It's not condensing it all into one and having it all go in at the same time? 'Cause every, the, the natural flow kinda dissipates, that's a good word, dissipates and it crawls back in. Now this is gonna go, is that, is that a concern, is, is it something that you've looked at?
It, it is something we will look at in the final design.
Got it, okay.
Right now, this is kinda concept, we will look, make sure that we're not causing any more issues downstream when it discharges into the creek, and we'll have watersheds looking over our shoulder and all of this too.
We have to do it, so.
Yeah, this is a critical need, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, the, the Oak Tree, yeah, but by
I mean, not just for Oak Tree, I mean, for the whole area, it's a critical need.
Correct, but some of the timing that we've done with the Oak Tree Development and trying to get them to take some of that additional water through the site, definitely expounding, 'cause they're gonna be making connections here this summer, so we'd like to get this in the ground as soon as possible. So it's kind of, once building the stormwater pond didn't really come to fruition, this kind of accelerated us to really get going on it.
How long would this project take?
To design
I don't care about the design, once we get it on, we're ready, we go for bids.
Once it's, once we get a bidder and award bids, I would say six weeks would be a bulk of it, and then I think
Our plan is to do this before fall?
Before winter.
Before winter, oh, well, okay, all right.
Yeah.
Got it.
It, it will be, to be honest, I think just down to the wire, if we have a, it, it, we will get some of it in the ground, but, and we hope to get all of it, but we're, that's why we're trying to move as quickly as we can.
And it'll all gravity feed into the creek, right, it's not gonna, we're not gonna need pumps or any of that crap.
There's no pumps, it's all, it's all gravity.
Okay, great.
I should note to the council as well, this isn't just the monthly stormwater fee that funds this, this is, the city collects a stormwater area charge with new development, and so
Oh, okay.
People, developments are more or less pitching into the costs of piping as they develop. So it's, this isn't a resident-driven improvement as far as revenue goes.
So I'm gonna, Mr. Skok, you have deemed yourself worthy of judging other people's decisions based upon your help and everything that you've done in the last year or two. Is this, you're really gonna be the one that has to take care of it, so is this, is this a function? Is this what, something that you look at and go, yeah, this is cool?
Yeah, with all the factors kind of in play with what we've been through the last few months, this is definitely the, the most viable option for us to get rid of that stormwater.
Good, so we're all on the same page?
Yep.
Go ahead.
So, we're feeding this down into Carver Creek, so what does this do then to Carver Creek? So it removes the water from up here, but Carver Creek tends to be a very full creek, and it is full right now, backing up, I mean, I guess Spring Creek is the one that goes right through town, and that's backed up, but that's backed up because the river and Carver Creek lead out right next to it. So, do we, have we looked at what the possibilities of sending all that water down that way is going to do?
I, we're not increasing the rate from, I guess from, from my perspective. We are, as the mayor kinda mentioned, we are kind of somewhat consolidating it into a pipe. And so, sometimes it will potentially get there faster, but
It's where it ends up anyway.
It, it's where it ends up anyway, so it's, it's not like it's, it's not increasing the amount of water to the creek.
That's exactly where it ends up, when, lowest point.
Right, but what I'm saying, right now, we have it rushing down to Dalgrin Road and then it goes pat
Into the creek and on the
Okay. Except for what's heading actually down the road, or has that managed to get its way back down here too?
We'll be capturing some of what's heading down the road of Dalgrin Road as part of the system and taking it down Jonathan Cover Parkway.
So, maybe I can ask you a question that would piggyback and hopefully put some of council member Mock's concerns at, at bay. I'm, throughout this process, in order for us to get approval, this has to hit the watershed district of Carver County as well as
The lower Minnesota.
Lower Minnesota, and if they have any issues whatsoever with increased or consolidation, they're gonna voice that right away and not let us do it anyway.
Yeah.
Is that accurate?
Yes, and I've, I've had preliminary conversations with the Carver County WMO and they, from a concept idea, they're all okay with this. There's details we need to show them that will get worked out through the final design. Stormwater calculations that show how quickly it's getting there, what type of volumes and stuff, so. It's all part of that process to get their approvals.
And this will help with the issue, that ponding issue by Community Park on that, what is it, east side of JCP?
This may, this doesn't specifically take that water that, that, that comes down Jonathan Cover Parkway up by, let me go back to a better figure. If the green option that we have on, on the screen now, that provides an opportunity to help alleviate that, but we haven't fully explored that and understand the pros and cons of it yet. Yeah, if we were to construct the yellow option, option B there, it's less, it's less, it provides less opportunity to improve that, that's part of the conversation that we need to have right now. We didn't anticipate collecting some of that water when we were trying to put it into a stormwater pond, or at least we weren't trying to solve that problem right now. But because we're running a pipe very clear, close nearby, we need to have that conversation and understand what the pros and cons are of all of that.
Yeah, because this is just one long pipe, it's got one intake, right? There's not intakes along the way.
Correct.
But we could pipe over and connect it to
Culvert there already.
We could
Yeah, but that culvert goes somewhere else.
Right.
We could, it's an idea that we've had, that we could try and capture some of that water that goes over to Community Park. It's, it gets complicated with the watersheds, that's right on a watershed boundary right now, so there's, I don't know the answer as to whether they're gonna allow it or not.
Well, you're pretty aware that it's a concern of everyone's and you will take a look at it moving forward.
Absolutely, yes.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, did you look at just continuing that run down alongside of Jonathan Cover Parkway and dumping in on the, I guess it would be the north side of JCP at the bridge?
We did originally look at that, but
Instead of tubing it across and, and cutting through?
It's a longer distance and
Correct.
Again, deal, ultimately deals with the same property owner that we were trying to buy the, tried to do the storm pond, so it creates additional complications down there.
Understood, thank you. And does this take a lot of the pressure off of, a lot of the pressure off of Dalgrin Road from the D.R. Horton project?
From the which project?
It's not D.R., from the Hartman project.
It should help relieve it, it's not gonna completely eliminate it, but we are taking, I would say, half of the water that currently goes down there is now gonna be, in that one picture I showed you of, of the actual water coming over the silt fence onto Dalgrin Road, we should be capturing about half of that water and sending it down this bypass.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to authorize preparation of plans and specifications for the JCP Stormwater Bypass Project.
Motion by council member Monroe.
I'll second that.
Seconded by council member Hank. Uh, any further discussion, comments? Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You, you need a glass of water or a sandwich or something? All right, we are now to city council communications, council member Monroe.
I have nothing.
Johnson?
Um, we had a Carver Business Council meeting on Friday and those continue to be really well-attended and Planning Commission Thursday night.
This Thursday night?
This Thursday night.
All right.
Mock?
Uh, we did not have an HPC meeting this month, so I don't have anything.
Hank?
Nope, but I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Wait, wait.
I have a, there's a motion on the table. Motion dies for lack of a second. I have, I have a question, have we had an opportunity to speak or have we made any exception to the school for mowing the lawn out to the the lawn out to the actual highway? I know that we had to talk with Carver Crossing in order to have them take care and tend the, all the way out.
We've, Mayor and Council, we've reached out to the school district, and they communicated that they'll be taking care of it.
Oh, good. All right, thank you. That's all I had. Mr. Merrick, did you have anything? Semidex? Brenda? Brian? Okay, you're good, all right. Have a header, Kline.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. That was funny.